Okay, good morning. Go ahead and call the Delaware County Council meeting, October 25th, 2022, to order here in the Delaware County Commissioners' courtroom. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Ron?
Why don't you start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, just again, as a reminder, questions from the public can be directed to the County Council email at countycouncildist@co.dellaware.in.us. Or you can contact any councilman anytime during the month directly. Denise, was the agenda posted and advertised?
Yeah.
We'll do roll call first.
Yeah, I didn't have that on here. Okay, how about a roll call? Please, Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Here.
Ms. Piper?
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Okay, now you can do the agenda.
All right, the agenda was posted and advertised, right Denise? Okay, and I need to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard, questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter? Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And next up, I would entertain a motion to approve the September meeting minutes.
So moved?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any questions, corrections from council? Roll call, please, Donna?
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter? Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, and we are to transfers. Tanya, are you?
I am.
Reading? Okay, all right.
Starting off with County General, Assessor 134. Two 12, Form 11 applies, negative $4,344. Three 11, Legal Services, positive $750. Three 93, Schooling Conference, positive $3,594 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve, second.
Motion from Piper, second from?
Mary.
Mary, okay. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Circuit Court, 138. A 133, Court Reporter, negative 1,000. A 161, Prohibition Officer, negative 9,000. Three 13, Psychological Testing, positive 10,000 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve, second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from council?
I would like to ask, what is the psychological testing? Can you tell me what that is?
For psych evaluations, for people that are attorneys that ask for psych evals for defendants on cases.
Okay, thanks.
Did you tell us you thought this would cover?
I hope so. Do you want me to tell you what we've spent this year? So obviously jury trials are up this year and as they should be since we're playing catch-up. We've spent $48,705 in jury trials, so above and beyond our $25,000 and our $15,000, but because the commissioners gave us art money, that's what we've been using. And then we've spent $37,456 in psych fees above the $20,000 that were appropriated, but because we've been using art money, we've been pulling from our jury fee money to cover. It's about $1,000-ish dollars, maybe $1,500 per psych eval, and you have to have two psych evals per case, so it's about $3,000 per case. So I pulled in another $10,000 hoping that'll get us through the end of the year. If not, I'll just transfer over some more money in December, but I'm thinking this will get us through.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Prosecutor. We have 137 is the fund. A 115, Deputy Prosecutor, negative 8,15720. B 115, Deputy Prosecutor, positive 8,15720 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Ron? Motion from Piper, second from?
Ron.
Quakenbush, okay. We just got a message from Rhonda. Is this the one she was talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Denise, okay, and she's unable to be here this morning, but she was at Finance Committee and it was favorable. Just a transfer of a employee. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna?
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Other. First up, we have, the first two are going to fall under Cumulative Bridge Engineer, 1135, and that's Department 190. We have 173 for negative 16,500. And 361, Large Bridge Structures, for a positive 16,500. The next lines are also 1135, but it's just regular cumbridge. We have 173, negative 44,000. 160, positive 15,000. 361, Large Bridge Structures, for a positive 29,000, and this total comes to zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter? Or Quakenbush, whichever one you want to go with, I think that was close.
Ladies first.
There you go, there you go. All right, questions from council?
Could you just say what the large bridge structures are?
So there's going to be two bridges that we're going to replace, take the boards out, and it's going to be an open grate on there. So Bridge 17 and Bridge 42, those are going to be replaced.
Those are iron bridges, right?
Yes.
Truss, iron truss, old bridges.
She just done the deck, replacing the decking?
Right, the boards will come off and then it'll be an open grate on there. I believe it's going to be like the old Gregory Bridge. You guys are familiar with that?
Remember we had to put something on that that the deer could cross? Will there be a solid? That's an open one.
Okay.
And the deer couldn't get across it, so they went back and put a solid walkway.
I'm sure there will be, but I'll double check on that.
Deer or any animal.
Mm-hmm, okay.
What was the bridge number?
Bridge 17, which is on 800 northwest of 825 west. And Bridge 42, which is 900 northeast of 450 east.
Thanks. I have a quick question, this is just a little bit off topic of these particular structures, but I'm just curious about something, I know Angie's not in here, at least I didn't see her.
She's not, so don't give me any hard questions.
Nothing too hard, but once before, you know, I think you know I used to work in the rebar, but we discussed the number of bridges in Delaware County who were built before the 70s, which was before you had the epoxy coated rebar, which allowed the bridge to last much longer, doubles the life of the bridge up to seven years. So all of those bridges are past their lifespan. I guess the question I asked at that time was, was there any type of plan to catalog these bridges that were built before the epoxy coated rebar to get a plan in place to prioritize those replacements? Because they have, at this moment, right now, have exceeded their lifetime. Really, what's, I guess, are we just waiting for something to happen and then replace it as it comes? Is that too tough?
That's way over my head, and we'll have to ask Angie on that.
I can help Ron.
But Ron might be able to help.
Ron's got something?
On a scheduled basis, the Highway Department, Bridge Department, hires a consultant to come in and evaluate every bridge in the county, and they give them a bridge report. I don't remember, it's every five years, 10 years, four years, maybe it's every four years, and they would be notifying the Highway Department at that time. That's how the plan is actually derived, is from those inspections, and they're required by state statute.
Thank you.
So they are inspected. These bridges here are older than anybody in this room, including me.
That's old.
There we go.
There we go.
And those bridges are scheduled out in advance, so get with?
Angie.
Yeah, get with Angie and she can let you know how those are going, and basically the funding is what activates those into moving up in the line, so, okay, I think we're, we've got a motion in a second. Any more questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, Highway Department, 1176. 173, Health Insurance, negative $30,000. 160, Overtime, positive $30,000 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Quakenbush, second from Piper.
Beat ya.
Questions from council? Roll call, please, Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter? Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Voca Grant Fund, 9116. B 104, Family Recovery Court, negative 10,381. 102, Child and Homeschool Visitor 2, positive 4,97445. 103, Child and Homeschool Visitor 3, positive 7,367. B 101, Child and Homeschool Visitor 1, negative 1,0096134. 172 per, negative $100. 174, Life Insurance, positive $100 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from?
Ballard.
Ballard, all right.
Thank you.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I'd like to ask real quick, could you educate me a little bit on the child and homeschool visitor?
Okay, so our child and homeschool visitor is, basically was created because the state office created a triage assessment, and so it's a way that we can, it's a, but I think it's 12 questions now where we decide the risk of a child, and so because we have so many, and we still have some on the waitlist because there's just so many, so many kids, not enough people, it tells us which cases are the most severe that we need to get someone focused on. So because we don't have enough volunteers to take all the cases, we have these child home and school visitors that their sole purpose is to visit the children in the school and in the homes. So we can't necessarily put a volunteer on it to do this full immersion that they normally do, so they, this person will just go see these kids, make sure they put eyeballs on these kids, and then they end up, they also work with the case managers, and they just basically do a mini case management to what a regular CASA advocate does.
And does this get like triggered by some sort of child protective services?
Yeah, all of our cases are Department Child Services cases, yes.
And is this replace someone else?
Replace, no.
Right.
No, no, VOCA, this is just, this is just while I'm getting our triage wellness grant, this is supplementing that, so until this program, until the kids get lowered or I need less volunteers or I need less staff, I'll just keep the VOCA going so we can make sure we cover as many kids as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, we got through that one, we were on addendum two.
Well, we got a vote.
Oh, yeah, let's take a vote. Roll call, please, Donna?
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter? Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Oh, addendum one.
Okay, addendum one. County General, Communications 124. We have B 132, Communication Tech, negative 5,000. G 123, Communication Tech, negative 5,000. E 122, Communication Tech, negative 1,000. F 125, Communication Tech, negative 1,000. 198, Part-Time, negative 3,000. Then down to 312, Professional Cleaning, positive 1,000. 361, Equipment Repair, is a positive 10,000. 364, EMD Maintenance, negative $290. 363, Software, positive 3,290. 441, Miscellaneous Equipment, positive 1,000 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? You guys are probably going to need explanation on this.
So when we did the renovation, the $10,000 is some stuff that we came across electrically, both inside and outside the building, so, and the software is some software that we have to pay for before the end of the year as a renewal, so they had actually ordered it prior to the first of the year last year, so those are the two biggest ones.
So, congratulations. You've learned the system, you're doing a great job.
Thanks.
And dispatch looks great, by the way.
Can you give us a quick status of the 911 center?
Yep, so I would invite everybody to come in, just understand that it's only about 98% done. They are moved back in there. Ron will be able to see it tonight for the 911 board meeting, but it is a much different center than it was before, structurally and mechanically, so it is going good, there's some bugs that we had to work out, but other than that, it's operating exactly how it should, so.
Pictures look great.
I was at Selma the other night, and one of the volunteer frontmen came up and thanked us for the money that they in Albany were able to communicate on a fire. I want to thank the council for that, that was nice.
Yeah, like I said, I would invite you guys to come in and see it. We did not post the final pictures, I didn't think it was the right thing to do prior to the 911 board meeting, so, and we posted every picture up till that point on our Facebook, but the final pictures have not been posted yet, so.
Well, I think it's amazing to see where we started and where we've come. I mean, it's an absolute gem for Delaware County, and you're part of that process that made it that way, so.
It's not just me, it's a team effort.
I said, you're part of the process.
It's a team effort, but.
But you've been, you've been a bull in this, and that's what we wanted. It's done, done well, and quite honestly, it's only going to better serve the citizens here. So the 911 center, it's completely different than it used to be, and for the better. So I hope everybody realizes that, it's been a lot of work to get to that point.
And you might just state, too, that during the process, the 911 center was up and running 100% of the time?
It was, we moved it over to EMA on the other side of the building, so we moved six positions over there, which is not, obviously, the number that we typically have, but the dispatchers made it work, they were, they were great throughout the whole process. We had told them three weeks, we actually got it done in two and a half, so they were happy to be in the new home, so.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just add just a bit to that. Originally, that communications center was in the basement of the old jail, which was the beginning of the joint communications for the entire city, county, towns, and then later on, I forget which commissioner group had an opportunity to buy the building over there at the library, and we floated a small bond issue, we being the county council at that time, to help them so they could buy that building, and it has just progressed, and you guys hear me talk, and Scott says I talk too much sometimes.
He says the same thing about me, too.
But, but I have witnessed the beginning of that communications in the basement of that old building until what it is today, and that's why I've encouraged Mr. Ballard, if at all possible, that he could convince the next, next generation of elected officials to keep you on that board for a while, if you have the time, because you've been an integral part of supporting Fred and the whole group, and Fred and I have bumped heads two or three times, but in the process, part of my motivation in life, Fred, is to challenge people, and you've stood up to the challenge, and you are now part of the heartbeat of the community.
Thank you.
Because even when the lights are out, he'll still be running.
I don't run too much, if you haven't.
I mean, you're in part.
Well, Fred, in addition to all the things that you guys are doing over there, I want to personally thank you, and I know, I'm sure that other people appreciate the way that you guys utilize your social media in an informative and transparent way to make sure everybody, not just in these meetings, in the commissioners' meetings, because you always come here and report everything, but, so everywhere, everyone everywhere has an opportunity to stay up to date with what's going on over there, so I appreciate the fact that you make that a priority.
Thank you. Thanks for the comments, council. Roll call, please, Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, Treasurer, 127. D 106, Assistant Cashier, 1, negative 5,747. E 106, Assistant Cashier, 1, positive 5,747. B 107, Assistant Cashier, 2, negative 4,822. C 107, Assistant Cashier, 2, positive 4,822. C 106, Assistant Cashier, 1, negative 6,11303. D 106, Assistant Cashier, 1, positive 6,11303. D 103, Head Bookkeeper, negative 6,57968. E 103, Head Bookkeeper, positive 6,57968 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard?
No, Ms. Jane.
All right.
He always gets us confused.
Yes, he does.
Questions from council? Questions from council?
There's a lot of turnover, isn't it?
They're moving people around their office.
Pardon?
We're moving people around in our office.
Oh, okay. Good explanation, thanks.
Roll call, please, Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jail, 145. B 147, Correctional Officer, negative 4,0210. C 147, Correctional Officer, positive 4,0210. D 119, Correctional Officer, negative 4,0210. E 119, Correctional Officer, positive 4,0210. Total zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
Yes, Mr. Webb, they both went to other agencies, one to Ball State and one to Blackford County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate our telepathic thing.
I know.
Roll call, please, Donna?
Mr. Quaken, excuse me, Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under Other, we have Health Department, 1159. 108A, negative 9,14480. 108B, positive 9,14480 for a total of zero.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Was he at the Finance Committee?
Well.
We had to call him.
Yeah, he came, he came running over from the Health Department. This was a recommendation of the Finance Committee, he's just replacing the nurse.
Well, I've brought this up before, it's, it was tradition before I was ever on the council, it was tradition when I was a commissioner, that if the department head or elected official didn't attend the meeting, it was tabled till the next meeting.
Why don't you see if you can get him?
He never comes till somebody calls him.
Get him over here.
Did you say, Scott, that it was recommended by the Finance Committee?
Well, he was at the Finance Committee.
He made it to that meeting.
Yeah, he got called during the Finance Committee meeting and came running over from the Health Department to answer the questions, that's how we found out he was a nurse.
So I guess, as someone who wasn't at that meeting, and he's not here right now.
Hey, Mr. Transparency. The Finance Committee is not open necessarily to the public, it's, the doors open, it's not advertised, this is advertised to the public.
See, me and you have, me and you have to work on our telepathic communication, you didn't know what I was going to say. What I was going to say is I agree with Ron.
Wouldn't mean that.
I think we've done that in the past, too, though.
We still have the addendum two and the transfer, so.
I was joking.
Yeah, I was going to say, what we could do is table this for now, if it gets here before the end of the meeting, then we can bring it off the table and.
So moved.
Yep, that works.
Got a motion from Quakenbush, second from Piper, to table.
Myself.
Piper, that's the second, yeah.
And that's really not fair to the, the department has an elected official who makes an appointment to be here.
Okay, we've got a motion to table, roll call, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Addendum Two. It's County General, Public Defender, 139. C 150, Public Defender, negative 8,600. D 150, Public Defender, positive 8,600. B 150, Public Defender, negative 1,500. 211, Office Supplies, positive 1,500, for a total of zero. Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion from Quakenbush, second from Piper. Questions from counsel? Want to explain that for counsel, please?
Sure. We, since losing Don Dunick, we have someone in the wings waiting to start as his replacement, which thanks to you all will give us a full house of public defenders for the first time in a year. So we are very excited to have our new person start. The office supplies, we, we've talked about all of the, with every case, we get a load of discovery. When I say a load, I mean a load. We, the staff, forward it to the attorneys and the attorneys then print it off for their use and their, because all we would be doing is printing discovery all day long as a staff. So they go ahead and print the discoveries and then they give us a bill. This is not for pens, well, some of it's for paper for us, but it's basically to repay the attorney's offices in their overhead for having to print all of the discovery.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay, that leads us to financials and appropriations. Under County General, we have Sheriff, 129. 444, Interdiction Equipment, $2,600, for a total of $2,600. Move to approve.
Second.
Mary.
Oh, Mary. I heard Mary.
Motion from Piper, second from Chambers. Questions from counsel? No questions? Roll call, please. Donna?
Okay, just a sec. Let's try to get stuff together here. Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under other, we have Edit, and that should be 1112, as far as the fund number 310, Edit Projects. That amount has been reduced from the original amount. It is a positive 1,848,680, for a total of 1,000, or 1 million, I'm sorry, let me reread. 1,848,680, for a total of 1,848,680. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper?
Second.
Second from Ballard?
Yep.
The commissioner's representative here.
Hiding in the back.
He's teasing you.
Is that all you wanted to know?
For the record.
I actually did have a question. Sorry. I just wait for Scott to ask. Could you explain what this is for?
Yeah, this is just standard stuff. I do this a couple of times a year to pay bond payments, the new jail building, of course, anything paid out of Edit, et cetera. Donna and I work closely on Edit. She's the one that helps provide these numbers, what's available to be appropriated and so on.
Awesome. Is that what the reduction was, was as far as, because I had three minutes on paper?
Yeah, she did the research to see what was available to be appropriated and this is what's available.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Get your financial, you'll see that.
Well, I did. That's what threw me off, because I noticed it was less than what I had on my paper.
I called Donna as soon as I saw this on the internet and I thought of you. You brought that up the last time.
I appreciate that.
I wanted to get in front of you a little bit there, let you know I listened to you, too. Hang in there.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, County Inmate Medical Care, 4914. 311, Inmate Care. This amount has been reduced also from the original request and it is now 30,000, positive 30,000, for a total of 30,000. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from counsel?
I do have a question about, could you tell me what the inmate care is for?
This is for all the medications, any kind of special psych services, whatever, that are not covered by our inmate medical contract for their services. This is the second time I've had to put money over and we had to reduce it because this was all that's not available. It's just an ongoing problem. We're having to maintain inmates on psych medications and some of their other special medications that are so expensive and we have to keep the inmates for so long and we can't deny it, so.
Let me ask you a question. I know before COVID that there were a lot of groups coming into the jail to provide assistance with counseling, whether it be church groups, addictions groups, mental health groups, things that can go in collaboration with medication. And due to COVID, a lot of that was suspended. Is that still suspended? And if so, is there a plan to allow these groups to start coming back into the jail to assist the inmates anytime soon?
No, there are groups that are back in. That's what the IRACs group is and some of the others that are back in the facility. So they're already back in doing that. These medications, that's not that type. It's psychotropic medications so that the inmates can stand trial, that have to be maintained. If there's AIDS medications or special heart medications or whatever, we have to provide all those and it comes out of this fund. We do collect money from inmates as far as for some prescriptions, but at $5, when an inmate's medications might be $3,000 a month, obviously, it's a big burden on this fund.
And I appreciate you explaining that, but just to clarify, there are no more restrictions on outside groups coming into the jail due to COVID?
No, not in that respect, no.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy might have to come back and ask for money out of County General. And we've been talking about the charge for the inmates. They charge them all, but most of them don't pay anything, but their fees have dropped, I mean tremendously. They were getting like $1,200 a month. This last month, they only got 500. A couple of months ago, they only got 400. So she's looking into seeing if we have a county ordinance established. If we do, it's probably a little, to see about maybe increasing that fee. But more than likely, she's going to maybe be back next month asking for money. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that what we've been talking about.
When it comes to federal inmates and bringing them in here...
All that money is going to be reimbursed.
So that they handle all that. The county doesn't have to handle their medications, cardiac medicine?
Correct.
To piggyback off what...
And we are getting money back, just so you know, we are billing now. We started this year. I don't know why it wasn't done prior, but we're billing DOC for their inmates. We are billing parole, probation, all those people that we are mandated to house already. We are getting money back from them and they have been paying. It's on a regular basis. It's just, it's not enough to keep up with what it's costing, so.
Brian brought up the federal inmates and typically, this is a question I would ask Sheriff Skinner, but I don't see him in here today, so I'd just quickly ask you. During our council meeting, the idea was to get that contract signed beginning of October. Do you have any information on that, if that was signed yet?
To my knowledge, it has not been signed. Yes, it's still in the works. They're still sending us paperwork as if we had our inmates so we could start billing, but we don't have anyone to bill. So yes, we're still in the process. They just, the government hasn't sent us the contract to sign, because it has to come before county.
I have a question about, when we had a multitude of out-of-county inmates, were you receiving money from those counties for this?
Yes, we billed them also.
So that might be why this has dropped, because you've lost quite a few of those out-of-county inmates.
Right, we have lost some. We still have some Vermillion County, we still have...
But not the volume we had.
No, we didn't have the volume. We don't have that now.
That chart, or you gave us a thing about out-of-county inmates just here recently.
Yeah.
Nancy, you guys are just, you're just getting reimbursed the cost of that. There's not any additional funds that would come back to the county because we're administering any of that? So it's just the cost of it. But this, this amount is really for the population that's in here from Delaware County?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Tony's at the Red Revan, that's why he's not here.
That's, we were just there. I talked to, I was gonna say, I talked to him this morning and as of this morning, we don't, we don't have a contract yet, but they're still continuing to work on it. No timeline at this point. Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, let's go back.
Addendum one.
Addendum one? Oh, there it is.
I don't think that's right. All right. Would you like me to read again?
Second page on the addendum one.
Addendum one, page two.
Health Department.
There we go. Do I need to read it again?
We'll have to bring it off the table. I'll need a motion, entertain a motion to remove that from the table. Motion from Lassiter, second from Piper. We'll need to take a vote on removing it from the table. Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, so back to Health Department, 1159. We have 108A, negative 9,014480. 108B, positive 9,014480, for a total of zero. Move to approve again?
We're actually just removed it from the table, so it's removed from the table. So it's already, we've already got a motion and a second.
Removed as tabled, so.
Piper and Ballard.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So we're ready to hear from the Health Department. Jamie?
Good morning, counsel. Thank you guys for your patience on me getting over here. I honestly did not think I was needed for this. So it's not that I was late, I just wasn't gonna come. So, thank you. We're working on, as you guys know, we're working on some changes to our first floor using the ARP funding. So I've been working frantically trying to come up with some basic proposals to meet with engineers and architects to come up with how we're gonna do that. So that's what I was busy doing. So thank you to everybody who let me know.
They were adamant that they wanted to see your face, Jamie.
I don't blame them.
Questions from counsel?
Jamie, FYI, it's been tradition with the council for, prior to 1981, when I first got here, that if the department head or elected official doesn't appear at the council meeting, which is the public hearing, that it will not be considered. The request will not be reconsidered. So, and nothing to do with you, just the tradition of this body.
I fully understand. I appreciate you guys. I'll spend every council meeting here in this room from now on.
Appreciate your dedication.
Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you guys again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. All right, any committee reports? I don't think we have any. No ordinances. We're, we're still, just an update, we're still working through the part-time ordinance. There's a lot there and I feel like we need to continue to work on that one, just to update you guys on that. No resolutions? Any department heads?
Good morning. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. I want to put this out on a public meeting, but we will be pushing out publication at Star Press and with Kyle and whoever else I can get this out to. Yesterday, we started receiving calls from people in the community that someone is calling and identifying themselves with the Sheriff's Department. They actually identified themselves as Jason Walker and we know he no longer, I don't think he's working...
Is he still working for the sheriff?
Yeah. So he's identifying himself as Jason Walker. They could identify themselves as someone else, saying that Judge Dowling has issued a warrant for their arrest and that they can post a cash bond to keep from being arrested. We would never, ever call and tell you that you can post a cash bond over the phone. And they will offer to wait on the line as you can get the money together, usually gift cards. Again, another scam. We never would take a gift card for a warrant. So that has happened in the last two days. They're specifically using Judge Dowling's name. They're specifically using names from the Sheriff's Department. It is a scam. So please, hang up, call the court if you have any questions. Our numbers are online and we'll get that publication out today to warn the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Anything from the auditor's office? Counsel members?
Nothing on Facebook and nothing has come in through email.
I've got a couple of things, Scott.
Okay.
Don't want to lose my reputation here. I was going over the 2021 Police Pension Fund update recently and we are still actually distributing more money than the county council contributes to the fund. Not by a bunch of money, but by about $40,000 a year, which is probably one deputy's pension. And this, I've been adamant about this pension fund for years, trying to get the attention of the merit board who controls this fund, to no avail. I have not had any success. I've been tough on the sheriff, tough on different sheriffs, trying to get attention to somebody that would let the council at least be represented in the decisions made by this organization. This pension fund will not survive forever at the rate we're going. This pension fund will not survive forever at the rate we're going. And it's in a lot better shape now, and I mentioned this at budget time, because we have the county option income tax, public safety, which is basically covering this pension fund now, but it's not enough annually right now. If we didn't have those few fees coming in, it would actually be in the negative. Now, I don't know what the investments are. Who I know that the people are paid because on this report it tells Baird's fees of one hundred and six thousand, eight sixty-six, fifty, whoever Baird is, I don't know. McCready and Keen are the accountants. CoAmerica is a bank fee, which I don't know why anybody with eighteen million dollars or twenty-one million at the end of twenty-one would be paying bank fees to any bank. I don't get that. But I've never been given the respect to at least have a council member. It didn't have to be me, but somebody responsible for this money, the county council, to be involved at least in the conversations of this pension fund. I just this is my last opportunity to bring it up. It's a it's a document that just came to me recently. And I also have attached to this a request from Sheriff Skinner back when he first became sheriff to negotiate with the council for what his pension might be based on his state mandated salary, rather than the council deciding with the sheriff, as we have in the past. And that's what I have to say about the pension fund. I just wanted to bring that up. I have another thing here that was dated nineteen ninety-five dash twelve, signed by Sue Arrington, President of the County Council, an ordinance to freeze hiring in Delaware County government. This county has not been flushed with money for a long time. In nineteen ninety-five, the the council was starting the road we've been on. In twenty seventeen, ordinance oh three three was the last time we authorized the treasurer to borrow money to operate on the on for the county council. And that was in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, the president wrote to the department heads. After several lean years, the council was able to appropriate an increase in all employees' wages for twenty nineteen. And very important, the operating balance for the general fund has almost reached the point that borrowing for twenty nineteen should be minimal compared to recent years. The council recognizes the efforts of all of you and respect that has been given toward each member. With this in mind, we must all continue our pace and do our best to serve those who fund our government. And then Scott, our president now, wrote a letter this year that allowed us to show the fruits of the efforts of all these different bodies that have sat here and tried their best to keep our county in county government in financial prosperity.
Two thousand nineteen, who was the president that signed that?
Oh, let me see here. It was actually signed by all council members. Bledsoe, Piper, Alexander, Chambers, Lassiter, Quakenbush, and Matich. Probably was, let's see.
Matich.
No, probably it was me.
Probably wrong.
But I didn't sign as president. We all signed it. Yeah, well, I I don't want it's not about one of us. It's about all of us, and it's about everybody in this room. I know some of you have been kind of aggravated, wondered why me or why them or why those people got more than I did or all that type thing. But when it comes to being the county council, that's what we are. As we're elected to be the fiscal stewards of the funds and do the best we can. And if the general public wishes to talk to us about it, they can do it individually, or they can come to these meetings. Either way, they want to do that. But it's worked. We can thank the city council for creating the LOAT COAT program because that did give us a relief from the tax caps. But I'm a firm believer in the tax caps. I I earned my living in the real estate business for many years and owned rental properties. And that meant a lot to people like those that are in that field of work and and people that are in business. Those tax caps helped. Any business owner in this town would tell you that. And for that reason, we as council members had to live with the with the restraints and make them work, and it has worked.
I can tell you on the CoAmerica that you weren't familiar with, they handled the electronic funds of the pension payments because they work hand in hand with Nancy from the sheriff's department and then with the HR department of Delaware County. If the pension people get health insurance, retiree health insurance through the county, then CoAmerica sends that money to us. So I can tell you it's like the company that handles the electronic funds of the pension people.
But we don't know what that other company is.
Um, the CoAmerica is the-
CoAmerica, I understand that, yeah. That's a good explanation. I thank you for that. Yeah, I appreciate that very much. That's that's a legitimate fee. But Baird's, I don't know who Baird's is.
That one I don't know.
Hundred and six thousand, eight or two. I imagine they're I would guess, and I'm only speculating here, but I guess they are the funds manager, the investors. And why they're getting that kind of a fee, I don't know. I'm an investor myself. I manage my own retirement plans. And I know that those are astronomical fees, in my opinion. They shouldn't be getting paid a percentage on what's already been there for some time. And that's but I'm, like I said, all I've been trying to do is get somebody's attention to let the council be represented in some of this discussion. And and this has been over at least a twenty twenty-five year period. And it it's gonna go the way it is. And and how many of you have heard on the radio or the TV somewhere about how the stock market has been affecting 401Ks? I'm down fifteen percent right now myself in my own funds. And and if you stop and think about that, it's billions of dollars. And this this little pension plan here does not have enough members, pardon me for saying this, but it doesn't have enough members to 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 fund it. And that's why it keeps costing the government more and more money because it's being heavily subsidized by the taxpayers, and rightfully so. I mean, we we as government pay into perf. And I've gone so far to be I called the head of the perf people back four or five years ago. A man talked to me for some time on the phone about the possibility of converting the sheriff's plan into perf. And his final answer to me was the greatest or the biggest lobby group in the state legislature is the Indiana Sheriff's Association. So if you can understand what he was alluding to, there's the control. But someday, it won't work.
That's not gonna be in the far future either.
Well, it's it's gonna hurt the people that are on the plan. That's the problem. Because there's a there's a way in that plan. I've read it. I've read it. There's a way in that plan that if it is not functional, if it doesn't, can't make it, the employees, the deputies, will get their share back that they've contributed, which won't be a very big bunch. And it'll be dissolved when it when it goes into what you would call insolvency. And that's too bad. That's unfortunate. I I don't know how long it'll be, Donovan. I hope it's not near future, but it'll be such a financial burden that some somebody's gonna have to make that decision.
All right, anybody else?
I do I do have a question from this last discussion.
I would like to say something after, Ms. J.
And it probably maybe it's not the time to bring this up, but it's something that Tanya said about the sheriff's department getting retirees' insurance. The sheriff's department gets retirees' insurance, but the other county employees do not get retirees' insurance.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do. That we have several that pay in the back.
You can stay on till you're sixty-five.
Yes, until until you reach the age that you have to switch to the Medicare plan. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, even when I left as commissioner, I stayed on for about six months till I could get established with health insurance someplace else. I was allowed to stay on the county plan for-
So the health insurance is the same for everybody?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. It's just the the sheriffs, we get the money from that CoAmerica company. It comes in from that directly, rather than, say, like you paying the HR department to quiet a citizen.
I like that. That's a good idea, anyway. That's good. Thank you for answering that. I just that was just there and I didn't know what it was.
I was just waiting for Ron to finish. Um, I I was thinking about something. I've been reached out. I'm sure we've all been reached out to and asked questions by different people. But over the course of the year, I've had a lot of different citizens reach out, asking how to get more involved in government, local government, national government, whatever. Just they want to get involved. And I always tell everybody the best way to get involved is to get involved with your local government. A lot of people equate that to running for some sort of office, but it doesn't necessarily have to happen that way. And what I'm alluding to is every year, there are several several board and committee seats that are up for grabs. When I say up for grabs, up for to be appointed. Several are appointed by the council, several appointed by the commissioners. Some of them have to have equal balance of Republicans and Democrats. But a lot of people aren't aware of all of these 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 seats. What that generally leads to is we'll sometimes often have the same people continuing in that position, which is good for experience and and being aware of of what's going on. But I've always subscribed to the theory that the more different ideas and and eyes we can get on something, the better, and the more people we can get involved, the better. So personally, I like the idea of of those seats, changing positions as far as people and who sits in them on these boards and committees. So with that being said, we're at the end of October. We would do it in January, off the top of my head, I think, if I'm if I'm not mistaken, when we appoint those positions. So if you are someone you know is interested in getting involved and want to sit on a committee or board, I think we heard someone mention, you know, Ryan sits on the nine one one board. And, you know, a lot of people sit on various boards throughout the committee or throughout the county. But if you want to get involved with that, what you have to do is submit your name and say that, hey, I would like to be considered for this board. If you don't submit your name, you're not gonna be considered. One of the ways you can do that, over the course of the next month or two, is you can reach out to any one of these council members up here. You reach out to President Alexander and submit your name. You can email the county council, say I'd like to be considered for this board specifically. So that leads me to the next question. A lot of folks don't know, well, what boards are there? But what board can I submit to? Because you want to be specific. I would like, hopefully, and I'll talk to someone about this, to maybe see if this is something we could do, if we could post on our social media the the board positions that will become open, open for appointment. And that will give the general public an idea of what's available, and they can decide if they want to participate in that fashion and if they want to throw their hat in the ring and put their name up for consideration. So over the course of the next couple of months, hopefully, we can work out something to make that information more available to the general public. Because I know the majority of the people really don't know. Just the people that are in the inner circle really know what boards are what. And hopefully, that'll maximize participation for those people who want to participate, because there are people who want to participate. So that's all I wanted to say. I'll probably bring it up again next month, and I'll have a little bit more information as far as what those positions are. And yeah, if you want to get involved, throw your name in the in the ring and see what happens. So I just wanted to make that mention.
Little education for you. The auditor is the secretary to the council. And people can correspond to the county auditor, make their request, attention Delaware County Council members. And then the auditor will automatically, through Denise, send that out to every council member. So anybody that wants to correspond one one place, that's to the county auditor.
That's great information, Ron. Thank you for adding that.
All right, anybody else? Okay, I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work, not just the council, but the the department heads, elected officials, employees, for everything they've done and and the patience that they've had over the last several years to get us to the place that we're at. And it's we're in a better place.
Some of you may not may not know that if Scott moves to another position, this will be his last council meeting because on the election day, he loses this. He loses his seat on this council.
He does?
Well, I would I would.
You wouldn't take office till he resigns.
Yeah.
Then he would take the new office at the first of the year.
Cannot be.
He can't be on the council and de-elect to the state?
At the same time, yeah. We'll we'll cross those bridges.
Okay, I didn't know that. Thanks, Jane.
Point of order. Are you gonna allow the public to speak while you're campaigning for office?
I'm not campaigning. I'm just giving information.
Well, Rick Yenser, former newsman and author.
Sir, you're out of-
I've seen, now I don't care.
You are out of order.
You're out of order because, again, you're not allowing the public to speak when you're telling the public to come here. Democracy fails when people can't speak. Democracy fails when you-
You are out of order. You have not been called.
When you I don't need to be called. I'm a taxpayer and a citizen.
I'm calling security if you don't settle down.
Okay, I'll lower my voice. Thank you, Jane. Democracy fails when you don't tell people you're raising taxes. It fails when you hire people that don't pay taxes to work for you.
You are out of order. You are not recognized by the council at this time. There is you have-
I don't have to be recognized. I'm a citizen.
You are in every right to be in this hearing. You don't have no right to speak at this time, sir.
Democracy anymore. And remember, you raised our taxes.
How do you know that?
Um, I got a budget, no thanks to you, and I took an accountant to review it, and they found-
We've had enough of this. I I get it. I understand you're upset, but we're not gonna have Donna doesn't need to be thrown under the bus at all. I, you know, we all have our issues with people here, but at the same time, there is an approach. And and how you approached it is is-
No, you've taken public comment off of your agenda, and that is wrong. That is wrong in many ways.
No, it isn't because you have a right to you've got your phone right there, and she's been taking taking it on her computer.
Well, we're in person. We're not we're not online here.
It's-
And if you're not going to allow the public to speak, I want I want that known to the public. But thank you.
Okay. Anything else from council?
I appreciate all of our council members.
All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So move.
Roll call, please, Donna?
Hope first.
I did, so move.
Oh, sorry.
Ryan got the second. Ballard got the second.
I I know.
I enjoyed the job.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Alex- Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Now, off the record, I have a little handout I'd like to stand out to everybody that shows my tenure in politics as I'm fading away into the-
I would love it. Now, you're fading away by your own choice.
Yeah, but-
Look at that face.
I love these things.
Oh, good. Do I get one?
Don Bonner.